Call the Tuesday, January 7th. Council meeting to order, please silence all electronic devices. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer. Ms. Nyland on your call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Here.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Ms. Tillman.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Present.
And Mr. Stemley.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
Ms. Nyland, and the C V will have our first order business will be election of officers. And the first office up will be for President. Are there nominations?
I nominate Sean Fitzpatrick.
There's a nomination for Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilwoman Deitch seconded at?
Deitch.
Deitch, excuse me. Are there any other nominations? Councilman Prespolinski?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Don Prespolinski for the position of President.
There's a nomination to nominate Don Prespolinski. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Stemley. Are there any more nominations? Any more nominations this evening for President? Having none, nominations are over. Ms. Nyland on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Mack.
Fitzpatrick.
Ms. Deitch.
Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Don Prespolinski.
Mr. Simmons.
Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Stemley.
Don Prespolinski.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Don Prespolinski.
And Ms. Tillman.
Fitzpatrick.
We have six for Mr. Don Prespolinski, or three for Mr. Don Prespolinski, and six for Mr. Sean Fitzpatrick.
Congratulations, Councilman Fitzpatrick. You take over the meeting.
First, I'd like to thank my fellow council members for having the confidence in me to be a President. Thank you. As first order of business, I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Deitch as parliamentarian. And our next order of business is nomination for Vice President. Are there any nominations?
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Deitch.
I nominate Michael Mack.
I have a nomination for Michael Mack, Vice President. Is there a second?
President, a second that.
Nomination by Councilwoman Deitch, second by Councilwoman Tillman. Are there any other nominations for Vice President?
I'll nominate Paul Prespolinski.
I have a nomination for Paul Prespolinski.
And I second the nomination for Councilman Paul Prespolinski.
We have a second for Vice President, Paul Prespolinski, by Councilman Paul, I mean Don Prespolinski. Are there any further nominations for Vice President? Having none, Ms. Nyland on the vote.
Mr. Mack.
Uh, Mack.
Ms. Deitch.
Mack.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Paul Prespolinski.
Mr. Simmons.
Mack.
Mr. Stemley.
Paul Prespolinski.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Paul Prespolinski.
Ms. Tillman.
Councilman Mack.
Mr. Dabney.
Uh, Mack.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Mack.
We have three for Mr. Paul Prespolinski and six for Mr. Michael Mack.
Okay, so congratulations, Mr. Mack. I would also like the parliamentarian to be to the left and Vice President to the right. Uh, yeah, but you can scoot down or you can go there. That was his choice. Thank you. Uh, next up is approval of the minutes of our regular meeting December 17th, 2019. While everyone's getting titrated. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our December 17th meeting? If so, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the minutes.
Some moved.
Is there a second? Second. Yeah, we have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and second by Councilman Simmons. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Meeting is over. Do we have any reports of standing committees?
Yes, we do.
Councilman Dabney.
All right, tonight's Finance Committee meeting was called to order at 6:03 P M. By Chairman Dabney to review claims filed since the last meeting. Committee members Fitzpatrick and Prespolinski, Don Prespolinski were present, as well as council members Tillman, Nelson, Deitch, Simmons, Stemley, and Mack. City Controller Iman Hafmaster was also in attendance, as well as Attorney Jim Meyer. Claims reviewed, a total seventy-six thousand nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents from the Riverboat Fund, zero dollars from the Boyd Development Fund, and eighty thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars ninety-four cents for an E S G loan payment, for a total docket of one hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. There were questions concerning a transfer per ordinance, I can't remember the actual number, but those questions were answered to everyone's liking, so that it was taken off the table. And also, we talked a little bit about the E S G grant, there was discussion about that, or our loan payment. After that, Councilman Fitzpatrick moved to recommend approval of the docket, and with a second by Councilman Prespolinski, the motion was approved unanimously. And on a motion made by Councilman Prespolinski, Don Prespolinski, and a second by Councilman Fitzpatrick, the meeting was adjourned at 6:16 P M. The summary of claims are as follows, from the Riverboat Fund. Global Engineering and Land Surveying, sixteen thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and twenty-five cents. Hassan Associates LLC, thirty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars and fifty-two cents. In that transfer, here it is, from ordinance, per ordinance, forty-five forty-one, twenty-four thousand twenty-five dollars and sixty cents, for a total from the Riverboat Fund of seventy-six thousand nineteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. Once again, there was no claims from the Boyd Development, and the E S G loan payment of eighty thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Once again, for a total claims docket of one hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. And that concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Are there any other reports from any other city officers or departments? I don't know. We have our claims docket from Fund 2042, Riverboat Claims, five fifty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. E F T payment of twenty-four thousand twenty-five cents, twenty-five dollars and sixty cents from Fund 2031, Boyd Development, none, and E S G claims in the amount of eighty thousand dollars two hundred and twenty-eight and ninety-four cents. Uh, I call for a motion to approve the claims.
Motion to approve.
It's broad. We have a motion by Councilman Dabney and second by Councilman Simmons. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Ms. Nyland, we have-- Excuse me, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. President. Before we move on, I have a question in regards to, and I've always wanted to ask this question, in regards to the order of the meeting. After I do the Finance Committee report and I read all the totals, I was wondering if we could change, just for speed of the meeting, after I read the report, when I finish to say, well, I have a motion to approve the docket or the report at that time, and we can take that out right after I read the claims out to the public? And, you know, rather than move it three items down the list, we can just take it all in one shot? Would you consider that, just for, I mean--
Yeah, I think we, yeah, we have a, we're gonna be calling a workshop to go over kind of the rules and stuff, so that's one that we could work on, because that would definitely help the meeting flow a little better, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Uh, Ms. Nyland, do we have any petitions?
There are no petitions this evening.
Uh, we have communications.
Correspondence was received in the Clerk's Office on December 16th, the 26th, and the 30th from D L Z Weekly Activity Reports regarding the E S G Energy Project. Correspondence was also received in the Clerk's Office on December 16th, the 26th, and the 30th from D L Z Field Observation Visits at E S G Energy Projects for Solar System Inspections at the Senior Center and Park Maintenance Punch List Item.
Thank you, Ms. Nyland. Uh, we have no resolutions, so our first ordinance on first reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending provisions of municipal code regarding the Council's Rules of Order and Procedures. And this is introduced by Ms. Angie Deitch.
Uh, Ms. Nyland, can you add me as a co-sponsor to that? Uh, does the author have anything to add at this time?
Sure. Um, and the reason why I brought this ordinance, typically unanimous consent is used in a more positive way. And over recent years, in at least the last three or four councils, it's used more as the tyranny of one. If one person objects, and I got that from Attorney Meyer, the tyranny of one to suspend the rules. And this could, you know, typically unanimous consent is used to move the media along, just like with the, for the amendments. You could have said, you know, can we just accept the minutes by unanimous consent with no objection, right? So, um, in light of that, I recommend moving, amending this to require two-thirds vote to suspend the rules and procedures of the city council members. And the second piece of that, last month, there was some discussion that went on for a while. The city council sets their own rules. So, it was about a ten-minute discussion about submitting a form to the clerk for a board that we're appointing somebody to. We shouldn't have to do that. We can, so basically, it's just allowing us to, if we want to appoint a council member to a board commission, we don't have to turn that form in, it's just that simple. The only other thing is, I know that I would like to have a committee meeting, since I'm the Chair of the Parliamentary and the Rules, and I would ask that you appoint two people to that committee so that we can have a meeting to discuss this ordinance, because I think there's some other procedures, like the agenda, that can be addressed at that time as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Deitch. Uh, is there any further council comment on this ordinance? Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Uh, I want to bring a point out here about this being introduced and on the table, because, and when it was filed, because I think that technically, it shouldn't have been filed until after we were sworn in, because technically, you don't take office till the first of the year. So I think that this is improperly in front of us, and it should be removed and reintroduced at the next meeting, to follow parliamentary rules of order and be, so there's no discrepancy about timeliness or anything else. So, I, matter of fact, I had that objection on both of these things that were introduced on December 26th, and that they should be pulled from the table and reintroduced at our next meeting, and then we'll go on from there.
Uh, I'd like to, Attorney Myers?
Just to be clear, I, well, I don't know if it came from me or Amber, but the way the process is set up currently is for an individual in the council to ask myself and/or Amber Lepage, the Corporation Counsel, to draft an ordinance. And we do, and we share it back with the person who asked us to draft it, which actually couldn't theoretically be anybody. And then, the two of us share it. If we have any issues or comments, we make them and make edits accordingly, and then we, meaning either myself or Amber Lepage, the Corporation Counsel, file it with the clerk, and then the clerk disseminates it to the council. So, the council member themselves do not file the ordinance. I don't think it's any issue regarding the fact that Councilwoman Deitch was not actually sworn in at the time I filed this ordinance with the clerk.
Okay, so, per legal guidelines, this, that's fine at this point? By your opinion, uh--
Correct, Attorney Myers.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, are there any further council comments?
Point of order. Uh, Mr. President, I know you're brand new at this, uh, this position, but when ordinances come up and the sponsor of the ordinance gets to comment on the ordinance, after then, then it goes to public comment. After a public comment, then it comes back to the console for open discussion.
Okay.
Just wanted to bring that to your attention, sir.
I appreciate that. Uh, thank you. I'm new at this, about thirty minutes, not even, so thank you. Okay, um, so, is there any public comment on this ordinance? Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Uh, having no public comment. Is there any further council comment on this ordinance? Uh, Councilman Paul Prespolinski?
Well, you know, that's an opinion, and I have an opinion too, and I think as a legislative body that you need to have some ground rules, even in principle. And that my, my whole discussion here is that it shouldn't have even been, why is somebody who isn't even actively on the console asking for the legal department to do stuff for him? That's another point I have. And I don't want to beleaguer this, but it's a simple technicality in that, you know, what are you gonna do, have somebody elected on the next term and they call the attorney's office to do ten amendments before they're even sitting or sworn in? That's not right. The whole thing, it's a simple technicality. It needs to be pulled from the table and reintroduced.
Are you making that motion?
I can't take, I'll make a motion to table, but it's easier for the author just to remove it. You know, if you want to go to a vote and have a show of a vote, I think it's a lot easier in, for the author to just remove it. So, if there's any other discussion?
Councilwoman Deitch, are you entertaining removing it at this time? Okay, so are there any further council comments?
Yep.
Uh, Councilman Dabney?
In regards to this, I understand where Councilman Paul Prespolinski is coming in, but we did go and refer to our legal team, and he said there was no issue. So, you know, I side with the legal team here and just decided to move forward. Um, I mean, I would like to see, just go ahead and move forward, because we did consult our legal council here, so. I'll stay with that.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Is there any further council comment? Any further council comment? Okay, uh, next, our second ordinance on first reading by title only without objection.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch asked that it be referred to committee. I don't know if you--
Okay.
It's your call, but--
So, I have to appoint committee members?
Right.
Before we could?
Well, you can refer to committee and--
Okay, well, okay, we'll refer this to the Judiciary Committee? Okay, do you have a date in mind for the meeting?
Next Tuesday at 5:30.
Okay, so that'll be, that will be January 14th?
January 14th in the E O C room.
At 5:30. Uh, and then you'll, there's a application, I mean, a form you'll have to fill out for formal notification with the Clerk's Office, and that'll get out. Okay, thank you. Got, uh, our second ordinance on first reading by title only without objection.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, amending provisions of municipal code regarding internal control, and this is also introduced by Ms. Deitch.
Uh, does the author have anything to add to this at this time?
Yes, so, um, in December 2016, the council passed ordinance 4416, which was to create this Oversight Control Oversight Committee. And as written in the ordinance right now, it currently states that the Finance Committee Chair should chair that committee. Well, our Finance Committee Chair is very busy, and that's probably one of the busiest committees. So, um, the amendment is to recommend that there's an appointment as chair for the Internal Oversight Committee. In light of what has happened over the last year with our finances and what we found with some, you know, the overages and what has happened, I think it's important that we have two separate sets of eyes on those books. So, um, that's why I actually believe that we should go forward with something with a separate person and not the Finance Chair over that committee. So, um, if you, I don't know if you need to recommend this to a committee, but that is the rationale behind it, having two separate eyes, one for internal audit and one for Finance Committee.
Uh, now, I don't think we need to get maybe this at this time. Um, Ms. Nyland, I'd like to be added as co-sponsor to this ordinance.
Okay.
And would anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance? Is there anyone from the public?
Yes. Good evening.
Can you state your name and address?
Yvonne Hafmaster, City Controller. Um, I did receive a copy of your amendment, Ms. Deitch, and I am asking you to table this because I am in the process of updating the entire thing. The entire code needs to be updated. And since I've been in office for four days now, I just need a little bit more time to get all of the updates together, and I think it would be more prudent to do one update to the entire thing than to, to update, you know, lines in it, you know, over time. So, I, when we get the whole, the whole thing redone, you know, we will call a workshop with the council to go over everything, and then any amendments, additional amendments the council needs to make to it, we would entertain at that time, instead of updating something now, because my fear is if, if we update just certain lines in it and we don't capture that when we update the entire code, that, that it would go missing. So it would be better if it was just updated at one time instead of in a piecemeal.
I move to table indefinitely.
Uh, we have a motion on the floor to table this indefinitely. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second is, are there any objections? So, um, if there are no objections, I would recommend that we table this indefinitely. Uh--
You got a vote?
We have. But there were no objections.
You're gonna vote?
Uh, we can do it by acclamation then. If there are no objections, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Uh, unfinished business. We have nominations. The County Council has one appointment to the Michigan City Commission for Women. Term expires December 21st, 2019. Uh, the incumbent is Ms. Cassandra Cahill. Ms. Nyland, have there been any applications?
No, there has not.
Uh, new business, 2020 Council Committee Assignments. Uh, so, in lieu of me being new at this and not wanting to impose my will on everyone, I took the liberty of getting the, um, council committees and, uh, commission lists, and I'd like to call a workshop to discuss this, and I would like to involve the relevant commissions and the department heads that would be affected by who's on which committee or whatever. So, um, I would like to have a workshop in, I choose the date of Tuesday, January 14th at 6:30 in the E O C room. Uh, I was, uh, I saw the honorable Mayor Perry in the ar- in the audience, so I'd like to talk to you and see if we could coordinate this with some of your departments to get this workshop, so we could, uh, work on these committees and the commissions.
Sorry, Mr. President, that shouldn't be any issue.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, I'll get that out to Ms. Nyland in writing, so we can get that scheduled. Okay, the council has--
Just a second. Yeah, Mr. President, in regards to the meeting that we're, we're staying, you said January the 14th? That'd be, yeah, 16th, I'm sorry. 14th. Jesus. 14th, don't look at me like that, dog. I saw that, that's why I said what I said, Jesus, the way she looked at me. But anyway, I will be out of town for training, for a new job that night, so I'm gonna just email you with committees that I, on, I look, okay? I'll keep you informed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the, um, council has, this is just an FYI, seven appointments to the Commission on the Social Status of African-American Males. We have the incumbents, Ms. Abatine Allen, Minority Health Partners of La Porte County, Pastor Edward Damon Carr, Senior Ministerial Association, Mrs. Felicia Kelly, Hope Community, Mr. Willie Millsap, Swanson Center, Ms. Latanya Trumpman, N double A C P, Pastor Dennis Carroll, Human Rights Commission, Ms. Tracy Tillman, council appointment. Uh, as a note, all seven terms expire February 15th, 2020. Uh, is there any public comment?
Good evening, Yvonne Hafmaster, City Controller. And I missed your call for reports on other city officers and departments, so I'm going to do that now, if that's okay.
Please.
Um, on, um, on January 6th, and this is as required under Section 2-503, Establishment of Materiality Threshold of Internal Control, I am notifying you, the council, that on January 6th, the State Board of Accounts was notified of an erroneous or irregular material variance, loss, shortage, or theft of city funds. To give a little background on this, on late Thursday, January 2nd, 2020, my payroll clerk, Kathy Gonder, informed me that the Police Pension Secretary, Ken Havlin, informed her that he received information from, information that a pensioner's widow was deceased. Upon research, it was discovered that this pensioner, this pensioner's widow had passed away on June 21st, 2015. Pension benefits have been deposited monthly to this pensioner's bank account through December 31st, 2019. The Michigan City Police Department has been notified, and they have begun an investigation. In addition, the city's insurance carrier has also been notified of this potential missing fund.
Thank you, Ms. Hafmaster. Are there any, any other public comment?
Rodney McCormick, 617 Union Street. Just want to congratulate all you guys that got elected in office. Good to see a new President. Um, I think in order for us to move forward and get things done for the people, it seems like we're gonna have a voice this time around. It's time for us to get a new council. Y'all need to get rid of him. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Is there any further public comment? Please state your name and-
Ernie Hawaian, Michigan City, Indiana, three oh two Gladys Street. I, I've run across several issues with potholes in the city lately. There's one right on Franklin Street in front of Walgreens, very large one. And there's another one that, uh, I can't think of the name, it's, uh, it's out behind Harbor there, that, that street back behind Harbor, there's a large hole there. So, I, I imagine we're gonna be accumulating a lot more if they could, someone could look into those two, though, that the one on Franklin is pretty large.
Okay, thank you, over for those two.
Thank you.
Park Department. Are there any other public comment?
Uh, good evening, um, City Council, Sean Smith, uh, Michigan City Street Director. In reference to the pothole by Walgreens, uh, like the gentleman was saying, we picked that, we did, we took care of that, um, two days ago. We actually in the process of cleaning up the leaves from the current leaf season. As of tomorrow, I have, I'll have two, uh, auto crews out tomorrow.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Yep.
Is there any further public comment?
Mayor Perry, Mayor, Michigan City. Mr. President and common council members, my comment tonight is not to the council, but to some members of the public, so I ask your indulgence. At the conclusion of the inaugural ceremony, December twenty-eighth, in which all the members of the council and I were sworn in, in the area outside the council chamber, a group of people verbally attacked a person who supported me during the campaign and was attending inauguration at my invitation. That person was my friend, Ms. Talithia Ashley Harrison. Talithia was my friend during her days at Elston. She is my friend today, and she will be my friend forever. Venting your anger at me because your candidate didn't win by attacking my friend Talithia is unacceptable. How can we ever bring Michigan City together, which must be done if we're to progress, when we do not control our emotions and actions? You should be ashamed of yourself. I'm talking to the people that did that. You attacked my friend Talithia, you attacked me. If you're angry at me or wanna hurt me, I live at twenty-two oh six Maple Street, and my telephone number is five oh nine, five five four ninety-three hundred. From now on, have enough courage and decency to come after me, not my friend Talithia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are, are there any further public comments?
Uh, Dennis Scherbak, uh, I live in Michigan City. I work at, uh, Blue Chip.
Can you state your address for the record, please?
Twenty-three, twenty-three Normandy Drive, apartment three eight. Um, I'm here, uh, representing, uh, Frank Murvan, running for U.S. Congress. I'm just, uh, as an interested citizen to see what's important for the, uh, uh, people of, of Michigan City, and pass it on back to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further co- uh, public comments? Are there any further public comments? Having none, are there any council comments?
Mr. President?
Mr., uh, Don Prisbalinski.
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, first of all, congratulate Councilwoman Angie Nelson Deitch to the, uh, Michigan City Economic Development Commission, being the, uh, council's liaison, representative to that commission. Uh, and her and I had discussed this, uh, prior to the council meeting, and that, and, and the council always appoints someone on a annual basis, not the council, but where this process is done is where, uh, I had some discussion with Clarence Hulse from the Economic Development Corporation, and they're totally separate from the city. Uh, they're their own corporation, although the city gives them approximately a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, annually, that the way the selection process is for the councilperson to get on that board is what thereby, the councilperson has to know when to talk to the director, sometime in October, sometime in November, and express their opinion that they would like to sit on that board. Well, I have never known that. I know that they vote on a representative sometime in December, and that was taken, and that's when it's done. And what I told Mr. Hulse is that, and I asked him if he would be here this evening to explain this to the council, because there were some other council members that had, uh, questions with it. But apparently, he decided he didn't wanna come this evening. He said he'd get back to me today, and he didn't. He said he had to talk to his board directors or some board members to see if it would be permissible to come and talk to the city council. And what, what, what the process should do, and I talked to Mr. Hulse about it, is to put it in their bylaws, put it in their bylaws, since the city has given them a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, to whereby, in the month of September, or the month of October, that they would notify by email, notify the president of the city council, and notify each council member, that if you are interested in serving on this commission, that you need to do this, this, and this by this date. Otherwise, city council members have no idea when the time is, when they should call Mr. Hulse. I've never know, I have never known it, 'cause I mean, Councilman Beatry has been our representative ever since I think I've been on the council. So, Tim knew what to do, so then, it put in a bylaws where they would notify the council president, notify each council member when they need to apply by it, and send in a letter or whatever the, uh, application process is, because then from there where it goes, it goes to their executive board, and their executive board picks who they want to sit on the city council. So, there could be five council members that wish to be on that board and file for it, but their executive board makes the final decision. So, in the, uh, act of transparency, in the, in the act of, uh, good faith and openness to the city council members who would like to sit on that commission, I think that that should be taken back from, uh, to the councilwoman, since she's on that commission now, to express that to the board of directors, what the Michigan City City Council is asking for from the Michigan City Economic Development Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any further council comments? Uh, Councilman Pop, Prisbalinski.
Thank, thank you. Uh, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick and, uh, Ms. Deutsch, Ms. Deutsch and, uh, Mr. Mack. Uh, but I would also like to, uh, expand on some things that I brought up earlier. I think that you can get a legal opinion, but it's just like what we're, what my brother was talking about. That's right, my brother, about transparency, okay? And people, we always get told about transparency, that we have to be more, you know, transparent in our dealings. This, this, this thing that is going on with the Economic Development Commission, that, that's totally wr- that's totally wrong, and, and it's, it's more or less, you know, saying, hey, you're not important. Well, this is wrong in our community, because that commission, that body should also be working with the city of Michigan City, not just coming to us for money every year. And we had a discussion earlier, they wanted, uh, to extend their contract uh, to two years, and, uh, I think I spoke against that at a, a Board of Works meeting, and so did Mr. Fitzpatrick, and to find out what they're doing over there, because I think that if we're giving them money, they're responsible to come back and talk to us, not for us to beg them, all right? And that they should be giving us a detailed report, and we should be getting minutes of their meetings, like other commissions and boards, uh, or at least be put on file in the clerk's office. 'Cause I don't know how much money that it takes to operate that commit, that body. And I too, uh, in agreement with Councilman Prisbalinski about finding out more about what's going on there, what they're actually doing, what, what they're actually doing involvement in bringing economic development to this community. 'Cause, I, I mean, have we ever gotten a detailed report? We, I mean, you get a somewhat report, and people, you know, we, it's a talk, I think it's like an oral report. It's never hard figures on black and white. Has, has it ever been filed in the clerk's office? I don't think so. But also, what Mr. Prisbalinski brought up is this. Why would a commission that's getting that amount of money from you not even have the courtesy to notify the council? O- o- okay, maybe it's oversight, but no, it's not being transparent. It's who they want and who they don't want. All right? Let's get right down to the chase. I've been around Michigan City for a long time. I've been on the city council before, and that, and I'm not criticizing Ms. Ms. Deutsch, is, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if you took it that way, 'cause you know me, I'm not, I'm not speaking about you, I'm speaking about that commission, all right, and how they disrespected the city council and the city administration. That's what's going on here, all right? So, but besides that, I think that in the future, that maybe we should put that in the council rules, that they notify us because they're getting money from us, and they notify us a month prior, too. Also, I'd like to, uh, at this time, I would like to, um, congratulate Sean in Cranston, and congratulate the mayor for his appointments to, uh, the street, uh, department in, uh, well, central services division. I think it's gonna be a lot more responsible. We got two very, I think, energetic individuals there, and, uh, I just, I just say, I can't, I can't say enough about those picks. One other thing is finances. I think we need to have a, a major workshop with the mayor about our finances. Right now, in the month of January, and Yv- I know Yvonne's working on it, because I am absolutely floored when I was at that meeting on, uh, the twelfth of, uh, December, and said we only have one million dollars in the riverboat fund. We've had that riverboat money since nineteen ninety-five, and we only have one million dollars sitting in there? Well, not less, because we took some more out of it tonight. That's, that, that's very, very, I can't even find the words to describe that. But we need to do something, and we need to do it right away, so we get a handle on this money, or we're, we're not gonna be able to do a lot of, uh, I don't know if I'm overreacting, I don't think I am, but I don't think we're gonna, we, we really have to watch our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further council comment?
Uh, just one more comment, Mr. President. Uh, speaking as far as the, uh, finances go, and I know it's a big concern of everybody in the city administration, the mayor on down, especially with the, uh, city council, and, you know, we were talking about possibly, you know, notifying the, uh, State Board of Accounts to try to get them into, uh, Michigan City to take a look at the, uh, budget, uh, to see, you know, what's going on with it, take a quick review. And, uh, I don't know if I overstepped my bounds, but I'm kind of, uh, interested in seeing what's going on with that budget. And I took it upon myself as far as being the, uh, being the city council member and being on a finance committee that I called the, uh, State Board of Accounts, and asked them if they would come into, uh, Michigan City and do a audit of our, of our budget. And the gentleman that I spoke to said that he would talk to his, uh, superiors, and that if they would come into the city, that they come in every year in the summertime, but they said what they could probably do is move it up into, uh, springtime, you know, early spring, somewhere in that timeframe to, uh, take a look at it. And I kind of explained to the gentleman, you know, that we had a one point six million dollar shortfall, and what the situation was, what we were told the situation was, and, uh, to come in and, uh, take a look at it. That way, the city, uh, Mayor Perry, the city council, everybody knows exactly what's going on with the finances in the city, and we can get a fresh start from the past administration, from whatever happened there. Uh, like Councilman Prisbalinski on the other side stated that on December twelfth, we were told that the city's gonna have one point six million dollar shortfall. And then when I asked questions, I says, well, when did the city actually know that? And, you know, I was told by a couple folks that the city kinda knew that earlier in the fall. They knew it earlier in the fall, but nobody wanted to bring it up because there was an election going on. So, the city council was notified of it on December the twelfth, and what are we supposed to do then when one point six million dollars in the hole? What do you do then? Do you take the blame for it? We didn't do anything wrong. City council didn't do anything wrong. People can sit here and shake their heads or surmise whatever they wanna surmise. We weren't told, we were not told the facts on what was going on with the city finances. And with that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilwoman Deitch, she go first. You wanna go?
Hi, um, thank you. Um, I have a couple announcements. Um, uh, I'll file the paperwork for the meeting next week, um, five thirty on January fourteenth in the E O C room for, um, that, that amendment on council procedures. Um, two, Unity Foundation opened up their scholarship applications early this year, so I don't know if you have a student or know a student, or you attend a church, they're due way early this year. They're due on March the twelfth. They're typically due at the end of the month. So, it's important for returning students that they know this. Now, before they go back to school, they got time so that they can get those applications in. Number two, tomorrow, Arconic is having a job fair. They have two sessions tomorrow. They have one from eight to ten in the morning, and they got one from four P M. to six thirty tomorrow, and that's at four hundred Boyd Boulevard in LaPorte. Uh, must have a G D. or a diploma, and you gotta be willing to work an off schedule, off shift schedule, so, weekends. Um, but good opportunity. Next, um, Ivy Tech, and I have some flyers here. They're offering several courses, and there's several grants that are available so that people can attend these classes for free and get their certification in welding, electronics, several different certifications, and the classes are at A.K. Smith Center and also at the Whirlpool Building where Ivy Tech is housed in LaPorte. So, if you need more information, I have flyers here, um, but for those of you that may be on ti- television, if you email me, a nelson@emichigancity.com, I can get that information to you. And again, I look forward to working with the council members and also with Mayor Duane Perry. I'm looking forward to his, working with his team. And last but not least, today is my dad's birthday. Um, it's his ten-year anniversary of his memorial service, and I just wanted to say, um, I, I hope he's, uh, proud of what me and my siblings have been doing, but again, um, I just wanted to end with that, so thank you, Mr. President. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Councilman Dabney?
Yep. Um, Yvonne, just, I, I don't want to put you on the spot if you don't have the, the answer, I'm just getting emailed. I mean, but do you know the, the current cash balance in the riverboat?
No, I don't. If you email me, I'll, I'll send it out.
Okay. Because I know we did the one point six million dollar transfer out of CED and Riverboat into the general fund. I was told that that was gonna create some reserves. And it wasn't told to me that we had a one point six million dollar shortage, that there was a possibility that there could be a shortage based on collections
Correct.
that didn't come in properly or, you know, as properly projected. So I want to kind of knock that down, that it wasn't like this big overspending of the budget or anything like that. And it also, the council does get a chance to handle the finances. So we, that's what we do. We actually do the budget going into the next year. And if you all remember, we actually cut about four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if I'm not mistaken, uh, out of the budget moving forward. So I just kind of, I don't want it to get floating out there that we just like overspent this budget and all of a sudden we had a shortfall. Um, because, you know, I really almost take that one personally as being on the finance committee and I just wanted to correct that before that information, uh, walked out of this room. And, um, I just had to, 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 to bring that to light. Um, and I, I had another comment, but that one just kind of took me for a loop and I really wanted to address that, um, before I finish up here tonight. Thank you.
Hi, uh, Councilman Mack. Just a quick word of, uh, thanks and congratulations to, uh, Mayor Perry, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, the new council president, new department heads. Um, I'm hearing a common theme, uh, from everybody for quite some time and it's, uh, radical transparency, open and honest communication with each other and accountability for delivering service to the residents of Michigan City. That's where, what I'm hearing that as a common theme and I believe we're all gonna do that. So we're moving forward. That's where we need to go, just move forward and do the best we can to accomplish these new goals and what we need to do. Um, so thanks, I'm looking forward to this year and, uh, hi mom.
Uh, Councilman President, if you have another comment?
Um, on additional, I wanted, I, I'm sorry, I wanted to apologize to Yvonne for not recognizing her and congratulating the mayor for bringing her back on staff. I, I, Yvonne, I have a lot of confidence in you and I, I think that with all your years of experience and people that you worked with, I, I think we're gonna get to the bottom of this. And, and Mr. Dabney, I don't think you should take anything personally because we're all involved with this in that we need to just find out what, what ha- what really happened. And, uh, if this was, uh, uh, this wheel was going for several years and then it, you know, the brakes came on and it couldn't be covered up any longer. Because no matter how you cut it, that's a hell of a lot of money to be short. Simple as that. And, and that's the plainest way you can put it.
Uh huh.
You know, and that, and we need to find out and we're gonna find out who is, who is responsible for jigging the, for jit, let me use that phraseology, for jigging the figures.
Jigging the figures.
Jigging the figures. All right?
Jigging the figure.
Jigging the figures. All right? So, but, you know, don't, I, I want to apologize if I said anything that you took personally because we're all in this, we're all in this together and we just need to find out where and when it started and why and who was hiding it. I mean, that's as simple as that. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this, this is, I promise this is the last comment from me tonight. I promise it is also. If I didn't like my phone, I'd throw it at you. Mr. President. Anyway, in regards to, uh, uh, the economic development, they do come and actually give us a report, if I'm not mistaken, it's quarterly or is a semi-annual. When we get the, the, uh, the big glossy biners that shows us all of the different uh, companies that have come to Michigan City and all of the investment and things like that, we actually get that report. Um, so, you know, and like, what we spend on that, we actually put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the budget, you know, go to the economic development, you know, to, to fund, uh, those operations. But they do come here and give us these reports. Um, and it's the, the big glossy document that they give us, uh, is it a semi-annual? If I'm not mistaken, but, so we do actually get that. Um, and I, I'll reserve comments in regards to the, the budgets later.
Uh, are there any further council comments? Um, if no one, if no one objects, I'd like to suspend the rules for a moment and, uh, allow Mayor Perry to say something if, if no one has a problem with that. Are there any objections? Uh, Mayor Perry?
Uh, considering that, uh, this is time for council comment, thank you, Mr. President and Council for allowing me to speak. From day one, I pledge transparency and I'll pledge it again tonight. We're gonna get to the bottom of this. I'm not gonna put, say anything about the past administration and it's not the council's fault. Michigan City, this is not your council's fault. Overruns can happen in a lot of areas. You pay a lot of overtime. When you're not supposed to be paying overtime can happen in a lot of areas. But I guarantee you, I will report to you and we will sort through this thing. We're gonna take the cards we've been dealt, which aren't very good, but we're gonna turn this into winning hand. As far as Economic Development Corporation, I have a seat on that and I have three appointments. So you're gonna get the right numbers, you're gonna get them from me and I guarantee that. We're gonna squeeze that nickel for a while till we get back on top. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. All right. Careful, we don't need any claims here. Insurance claims. Uh, so, um, I'd like to say something really quick. Uh, just happy new year, Michigan City, and I had a great first year on the council. Looking forward to doing some great things. Uh, I want to welcome the new council, the new council people, Councilwoman Deitch, Councilwoman Tillman, Councilman Mack, uh, and the returning council. And, uh, I'm looking forward to working with the department heads as well as, uh, Mayor Perry. And, uh, I'd like to add that we intend to create a culture of extreme professionalism, fiscal responsibility and the current thing, radical transparency. And with that, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
So do you?
All in favor, we're shaking above and saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.